...meeting September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five is now called to order. Please stand and salute the flag. At this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to public laws nineteen seventy-five, chapter two-three-one. This agenda is complete to the extent known and was sent to Trenton Times and Trentonia newspapers posted on the first floor Golden Board in City Hall filed in the city clerk's office and posted on the city of Trenton website. Formal action will be taken. Roll call. Vice President Edwards. For the record, as I understand it, Council President, Vice President Edwards is excused from this meeting this evening?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Feliciano. Councilwoman Feliciano also has an excuse from this meeting this evening. Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettberg, as I understand it, Council President, Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettberg is en route, correct?
She's coming in right now.
She is here? Okay.
She's walking in.
We're gonna mark her present. Councilwoman Frisbee?
Present.
Thank you. Councilman Harrison?
Present.
Councilwoman Williams?
Present. You presented.
Council President Gonzalez?
Presenting.
Myself, Raina Garcia, municipal clerk, present. Legislative Council, Mr. Edward Cologie. And Mr. Bridges did call to inform us that he is en route and will be here shortly. And Madam President, with that being done, I can read, if it's your wish, I'll read the invocation.
Yes, please.
Almighty God, who holds the fate of man and nation, we must humbly beseech thee to bless this our city, these deliberations, and ease thy service that you may add with wisdom and understanding for the good of our community and thy greater glory. Amen. And Madam President, at this time, I understand we have a council recognition?
Yes, I'm gonna turn it over to Councilwoman Williams so she can introduce our guest for the evening.
Certainly.
Thank you very much, Council President. So tonight, we have a very special presentation. It's gonna be special recognition honoring the A-Team who are with us tonight in the front. If you guys can wait, maybe give a little wait. So the A-Team is celebrating its twenty-fifth anniversary. And on behalf of the city council, I will be reading the special recognition proclamation. Whereas born within the walls of the Trenton Area Soup Kitchen, better known as Task, the A-Team began as a spark of inspiration among a group of self-taught artists. They were individuals united not just by the love of art, but by a shared vision to uplift, to express, and to connect. Among them was Herman Shorty Rose and his sister Annabelle Rose, founding members whose passion and spirit have laid a foundation for what the A-Team would become. And whereas dedicated volunteers like Suzanne Darlene, along with many others, have impacted on the growth of this grassroots initiative, what started as a small collective quickly grew into a thriving artist cooperative, welcoming, inclusive, and deeply rooted in the belief that art belongs to everyone. The A-Team's mission is so important that prominent Trenton art supporters such as the great Larry Hilton were longtime proponents of their efforts in the capital city. And whereas brilliant artists like Frankie Mack, Carla Coleman, Lisa Lewis, Emery Williams, Ethel Mack, Charles Cha Cha Smith, Brooke Beatty, Carol Johnson, and Dolores Brails became synonymous with the A-Team's vibrant, ever-evolving gallery of talent. Their artworks spilled out to Task and into the streets, finding homes in galleries, pop-ups, businesses, and art events throughout Trenton and across New Jersey. And whereas today, the A-Team continues to grow, embracing new members and new visions at the Task Art Program and at their dedicated studio spaces, Studio Fifty-One, located in the heart of the old Trenton neighborhood. Artists like Debbie Casella, Claudia Muller, Gary Solo-Johnson, Frankie Mack, Wachera Kalima, and Gianna Smith have joined the collective, each adding their own voice to the A-Team's evolving story. The Trenton Community A-Team isn't just about art, it's about transformation, and it's about pride in our city, in our people, and in the power of creativity to shape our collective future. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the city of Trenton, county of Mercer, state of New Jersey hereby recognizes and honors the Trenton Community A-Team on the celebration of their twenty-fifth anniversary and expresses deep appreciation for their continued service, dedication, and extraordinary vision. So after we finish, we'd like to have a picture taken with city council, but at this moment, may I ask Anthony Cantonese, otherwise known as Tony Goggles, to come up with anyone else to represent the A-Team? And if you all wanna come up with Anthony, that's fine too. Please.
First of all, I'd like to thank the council for recognizing these amazing artists. I'd like to give another round of applause for twenty-five years of being here. Thank you, everybody, for everything you've done here. And I just wanna thank you guys, everybody here, for all the amazing art and everything you've done. And I wanna tell you what an inspiration you are to me. Seeing you guys create every day and seeing what you do really does inspire me. And I love all you guys, honestly. And I love everything that you do, and I hope we have so many more years of this. I just wanna right now turn it over to one of our prominent artists, Lisa Lewis, please.
I would like to thank you very much, Anthony and TK, for our recognition today. A little about me, my name is Lisa Lewis, and I've been with TK since two thousand and six. And art is a way of expression, it's a way of relieving anxiety. Art is just my life. You know, whatever I'm going through, I can put it on picture. I'd like to say thank you to all the members. Shorty Rose from the beginning. And Danny Joey. And thank you once again.
And I think if you are interested in seeing any of our amazing art, you can check on our website, tkteam.org. And we will be having an exhibition here starting Monday until Friday of this next week. Thank you very much for your time.
Would you like to give the council a second name for Pauline Tackerman?
We just wanna say congratulations. Thank you for all of your work that you do in the city of Trenton at Soup Kitchen. As a volunteer who always goes there, I enjoy seeing the artwork as you all have displayed. And I just wanna say thank you to Councilwoman Williams for bringing this to us to make sure that we recognized you this evening.
Mr. Harrison, we're ready.
Sounds good, Council President. Thank you. And that brings us to the point of the public hearing for the calendar year twenty-twenty-five budget. And we have two amendments from that, that I believe. And correct me if I'm wrong, as I understand it, I need to read those in full, correct? Okay. Madam President, I will be reading two resolutions in full. They are amendments to your current budget. And I will begin with the current fund budget amendments for the city of Trenton. That's resolution twenty-five dash three forty-five. We will ask for a vote after each, as I understand it, and then move to public hearing. Hold on one moment. For each one, correct me. There should be a public hearing for each. Until the public hearing is closed, but the, I'm opening a public hearing for this at this time. And we're asked for the vote following. Yes, sir.
Mr. Harrison, please. I'm sorry, before we get into reading the resolution, I'm sorry, can I allow Mr. Harrison to say a few words?
Certainly.
Thank you. My fault.
Thank you, Council President. In light of what happened last Wednesday in Utah, I wanna say no matter what our political views are, we should never celebrate violence, especially a public assassination. We should be praying for Charlie Burke's family and praying that this, this does not happen to any other family, regardless of their political or religious views. Please, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for Charlie Burke. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Harrison.
No worries, Madam President. At this time, again, I'll reiterate, we, we have two resolutions. Each of these resolutions is an amendment to the calendar year twenty-twenty-five budget. Each one of those requires a public hearing, so I will open these up treating them similar to an ordinance. And we will open each public hearing and close each public hearing. And then after which, I will follow with a, a vote on each. My first resolution here is resolution twenty-five dash three forty-four, and this is a resolution to approve calendar year twenty-twenty-five municipal current fund budget amendments for the city of Trenton. Whereas the city of Trenton introduced, introduced budget for the calendar year twenty-twenty-five was approved on the sixth of May, twenty-twenty-five, and whereas the public hearing on said budget was held on seventh day of August, twenty-twenty-five, and whereas, as desired to amend said approved, introduced budget, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Trenton, county of Mercer, state of New Jersey, that the following amendments to be introduced, to the introduced approved budget of calendar year twenty-twenty-five be made. Must I put it line by line? I imagine so. Current fund. From and to, so current fund general revenues, miscellaneous revenues, section A, local revenue, interest and cost on taxes, two million eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars. To one million nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars and sixty-two cents. Total section A, local revenue, eighteen million, six hundred and three thousand, seventy-five dollars to eighteen million, five hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and sixty-two cents. Miscellaneous revenues, section B, state aid without offsetting appropriations, transitional aid, from forty-five million dollars to forty million, five hundred thousand dollars. Total section B, state aid without offsetting appropriations, one hundred fourteen million, six hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred, sixty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents. To one hundred and ten million, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents. Miscellaneous revenues, section F, special items of general revenue anticipated with prior written consent of director of local government services, public and private revenues offset appropriations. US DOJ community, community-oriented policing services, calendar year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five, one million, one hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars. UNGUEC admin budget, calendar year twenty-twenty-five, to one mil, excuse me, one hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and six dollars. SHJHT safety clicker or ticket, calendar year twenty-twenty-five, ten thousand, five hundred dollars. US DOJ Marshals gang operation, calendar year twenty-twenty-five, two thousand dollars. SNJDEP clean communities, calendar year twenty-five, one hundred and eighty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety-seven cents. US DOE summer food service program, twenty-twenty-five, two hundred and fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents. US DOJ Edburn memo justice assistance, twenty-twenty-one, calendar year twenty-twenty-five, one hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars. US DOJ Edburn memo justice assistance. Sorry, yes. Twenty-twenty-two, calendar year twenty-twenty-five, one hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred dollars. US DOJ Edburn memo justice assistance, twenty-twenty-three, calendar year twenty-twenty-five, one hundred and thirty-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars. US DOJ summer expansion, calendar year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars. County of Mercer, Title III elderly services, calendar year twenty-twenty-five, fifty thousand dollars. County of Mercer, Title, for elderly services, calendar year, Title Twenty, for elderly services, calendar year twenty-twenty-five, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars. Opioid response program, calendar year twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty-five amended award, thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents. SNJ National Opioid Settlement Fund, count, continue calendar year twenty-twenty-five, from sixty-three thousand, three hundred and ten dollars and sixty-six cents. Somebody forgive me, I have a number, another number listed here, but they don't seem to line up completely. Can I get some assistance from anyone here for finance purposes? Is this and this? Is it from this to this? Is that what's happening? See if there is one. I'm sorry. Understood. Thank you, Mr. Cherry. From sixty-three thousand, three hundred and ten dollars and sixty-six cents to eight hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars and twenty-three cents. SNJ Childhood Lead CLPP, fiscal year twenty-six, nine hundred and ninety-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars. SNJ Strengthening Program, fiscal year twenty-six, sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars. SNJ Historic Trenton City Hall, calendar year twenty-five, three million dollars. Links, calendar year twenty-twenty-five, seventy-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars. Total section F, special item of general revenue anticipated with prior written consent of director of local government services and private revenues, fifteen thou, from fifteen thousand, one hundred and five, fifteen million, one hundred and five thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars and thirty-one cents, to twenty million, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars and seventy-eight cents. Miscellaneous revenues, section G, special items of general revenue anticipated with prior consent of director of local government services, other special items, sale of city-owned properties, one hun, from one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars, to seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Local section G, special item of general revenue, anticipated with prior written consent of director of local government services, other special items, twenty-five million, eight hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars, to twenty-six million, four hundred and sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars. Miscellaneous revenues, total section A, eighteen million, six hundred and three thousand, seventy-five dollars, to eighteen million, five hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and sixty-two cents. Total section B, one hundred and fourteen million, six hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents, to one hundred and ten million, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars, seventy-two cents. Total section F, fifteen million, one hundred and five thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars and thirty-one cents, to twenty million, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars, seventy-eight cents. Total section G, twenty-five million, eight hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars, to twenty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-two thousand, twenty-six million, four hundred and sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars. Total miscellaneous revenues, one hundred and seventy-five million, six hundred and ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars and three cents, to one hundred and seventy-six million, seven hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars and twelve cents. Subtotal general revenues, item one, two, three, four, one hundred and ninety-four million, seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars and three cents, to one hundred and ninety-five million, eight hundred and twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and two dollars and twelve cents. Amount to be raised by taxes for support of municipal budget, eighty-five million, four hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars and fifty-two cents, to eighty-five million, four hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred and five dollars and twenty-six cents. Total general revenues, two hundred and eighty million, two hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-five cents, to two hundred and eighty-one million, three hundred and six thousand, three hundred and seven dollars, thirty-eight cents. Current fund appropriations. Parentheses, A, operations with caps, that's a quote, city clerk salary wages, two hundred and three thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars, to two hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars. City clerk operating expense, seventy thousand, seven hundred and one dollars, to one hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and one dollars. Purchasing, forty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars, to sixty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars. Environmental health, three hundred and three thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars, to two hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Registrar, eleven thousand, eight hundred and three dollars, to ninety-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars. Animal control. One million, four hundred and eighty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars, to one million, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and seven dollars. C E A S salary wages, two hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars, to three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars. Fire, thirty-one thou, thirty-one million, six hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventeen cents, to twenty-eight million, nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand, thirty-five dollars and seventeen cents. Police, forty million, four hundred and thirty-eight, four hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars, to twenty-seven million, six hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars. Communications, three million, eight hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars, to three million, three hundred and twenty-four thousand, two hundred dollars. Public works, seventy-one million, excuse me, seventy-one thousand dollars, to forty thousand, five hundred dollars. Solid waste, five hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred dollars, to four hundred and eighty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. Streets, six hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars, to five hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred dollars. Snow removal, two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, to one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Public property, one million, nine hundred and four thousand, forty-three dollars, to one million, eight hundred and ninety-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three dollars. Traffic and transportation, two hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and five, excuse me, four thousand, five hundred dollars, two hundred and four thousand, five hundred dollars. Engineering and operations, one hundred and eighty thousand, ninety dollars, to one hundred and seventy-five thousand, seventy-five dollars. Economic development, one hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars, to one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. Recreation, three hundred and two thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars, two hundred and fifty-five thousand, to two hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars. Recreation salary wage, sales director, this is recreation revealed itself, two million, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents, to one million, eight hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars and four cents. Recreation O A, four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and forty dollars, to four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. Recreation maintenance and natural resources, one million, four hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars and twenty-four cents, to one million, three hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars and seventy-four cents. Recreational seasonal salary wage, seven hun, zero, to seven hundred and six thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars. Health insurance operating expense, forty-four million, two hundred and ninety-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars, to forty-five million, two hundred and fifty thousand, sixty-six dollars. Workers' compensation, seven million, sixty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars, to six million, eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars. General liability, five million, five hundred, excuse me, five million, five hundred thousand dollars, to three million, five hundred thousand dollars. Salary and wage adjustment program, S W, five hundred thousand... Five hundred thousand dollars to three hundred thousand dollars. Gasoline and diesel delivery. One million, three hundred seventy-seven thou- thousand, seven hundred eighty-seven dollars to one million, two hundred, ten thousand, seven hundred eighty-seven dollars. Total operations, item A with caps in quotes. Two hundred five million, seven hundred eighteen thousand, three hundred seventeen dollars and seven cents to one hundred eighty-eight million, seventy-four thousand, four hundred thirty-three dollars and ninety-five cents. Total operations including contention with, within caps. Two hundred fifty-five, excuse me, two hundred and five million, seven hundred eighteen thousand, three hundred seventeen dollars and seven cents to one hundred eighty-eight thousand, to one hundred eighty-eight million, seventy-four thousand, four hundred thirty-three dollars and ninety-five cents. Item E, deferred charges and statutory expenditures with, within caps. Number two, subsection, I guess subsection two, statutory expenditures. Social Security system. Two million, three hundred and two thousand dollars to two million, eight hundred and two thousand dollars. Unemployment compensation insurance, five hundred and thirty thousand dollars to nine hundred and nine thousand dollars. Totally defer- total deferred charges and statutory expenditures, twenty-nine million, one hundred twelve thousand, six hundred five dollars and twenty cents to twenty-nine million, nine hundred ninety-one thousand, six hundred five dollars and twenty cents. Total general appropriations for municipal purposes within caps. Two hundred thirty-four million, eight hundred thirty thousand, nine hundred twenty-two dollars, twenty-seven cents to two hundred eighteen million, sixty-six thousand, thirty-nine dollars and fifteen cents. Operations excluded from caps. Cap waiver approved by local finance board police. Eleven million, eight hundred, I have a, uh, I have a blank area with adjustment to eleven million, eight hundred thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars. Cap waiver approved by local finance board. Communications. Five hundred twenty-six thousand, six hundred eleven dollars. Cap waiver approved by local finance board via two hundred forty-three thousand, seven hundred and four dollars. Those are all end numbers and none prior. Total, total other operations excluded from caps, three million, three hundred twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars to fifteen million, nine hundred twenty-five thousand, five hundred sixty-four dollars. Additional appropriations offset by revenues. NJSA forty-eight, four forty-five, three H. Municipal clerk, one hundred sixty thousand, nine hundred eighty dollars to one hundred fifty-six thousand, thirty-six dollars. Total additional appropriations offset by revenues. One hundred sixty thousand, nine hundred eighty dollars, one hundred, to one hundred fifty-six thousand, thirty-six dollars. Public and private programs offset by revenues. Cops grant, three hundred sixty-seven thousand, five hundred ninety-three dollars. To zero. US DOJ community oriented policing services, calendar year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. One million, one hundred two thousand, seven hundred seventy-seven dollars to zero. UNJUEZ admin budget. Sorry. Okay. UNJUEZ. You good?
I'm good.
All right. UNJUEZ admin budget, calendar year twenty twenty-five. One hundred, zero, two, from zero, I have zero, from zero to one hundred and two thousand, three hundred six dollars. SHJHT safety clicker or ticket, calendar year twenty twenty-five. Zero, two, ten million, five hundred dollars, I'm excuse you, ten thousand, five hundred dollars. US DOJ Marshals gang operation, calendar year twenty twenty-five. Two thousand to, uh, zero to two thousand dollars. SNJDEP clean communities, calendar year twenty twenty-five. One hundred eighty-three thousand, four hundred sixty-two dollars, ninety-seven cents. US DOE summer food service program, calendar year twenty twenty-five. Two hundred fifty-six thousand, eight hundred fifty-five dollars, ninety-eight cents. US DOJ Ed Byrne memo justice assistance, twenty twenty-one, calendar year twenty twenty-five. One hundred twelve thousand, five hundred eleven dollars. US DOJ Ed Byrne memo justice assistance, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty, excuse, twenty twenty-two, calendar year twenty-five. One hundred eighteen thousand, three hundred dollars. US DOJ Ed Byrne memo justice assistance, twenty twenty-three, calendar year twenty-five. One hundred thirty-three thousand, four hundred ninety-eight dollars. US DOJ summer expansion, calendar year twenty-five. Twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred twenty-four dollars. County of Mercer, title. Title III elderly services. Fifty thousand dollars. County of Mercer, title is at twenty, elderly services. One hundred seventy-three thousand, five hundred thirty-two dollars. County of Mercer, title III elderly services, calendar year twenty twenty-five. One hundred thirteen thousand, three hundred fifty-two dollars. County of Mercer, title twenty, elderly services, calendar year twenty-five. Two hundred fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred forty-six dollars. Opioid response program, calendar year twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-five. Amended award, thirty-three thousand, seven hundred forty-nine dollars, ninety-five cents. SNJ National Opioids Settlement Fund. Calendar year twenty twenty-five, sixty-three thousand, three ten, three hundred ten dollars, sixty-six cents to eight hundred thirty-six thousand, seven hundred twelve dollars, twenty-three cents. SNJ Childhood Lead CLPP. Fiscal year twenty-six. Nine hundred ninety-five thousand, two hundred seventy-one dollars. Uh, SNJ strengthening program fiscal year twenty-six. Sixty-four thousand, seven hundred eighty-eight dollars. SNJ Historic City Hall, calendar year twenty twenty-five, three million dollars. Links, L I N C S S, calendar year twenty-five. Seventy-three thousand, three hundred sixty-five dollars. Total public and private programs offset by revenues. Fifteen million, four hundred seventy-two thousand, nine hundred forty-five dollars, thirty-one cents to twenty million, five hundred thirty-eight thousand, one hundred thirty-eight dollars, seventy-eight cents. Capital improvements excluded from caps. Capital Improvement Fund OE. Five hundred thousand dollars to two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Total. Capital improvements excluded from caps, five hundred thousand dollars to two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Municipal debt service excluded from caps. Interest on notes. Four hundred sixty-six thousand, three hundred thirty-five dollars to four sixty-five thousand, three, thirty-nine dollars and sixty-two cents. Qualified debt service interest operating expense. One million, three hundred forty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars to one million, five hundred eleven thousand, three hundred six dollars. Qualified debt service interest water. Two million, one hundred fifty thousand, seven hundred eighty-eight dollars and two cents to two million, three hundred fifty-three thousand, seven hundred sixteen dollars and two cents. Qualified debt service principal. Four hundred sixty thousand to four hundred fifty-five thousand. Qualified debt service interest. Seward. Two hundred thirty-nine thousand to nine hundred, excuse me, two hundred thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred forty-three dollars, seventy-eight cents to two hundred sixty-eight thousand, four hundred twenty-six dollars and seventy-eight cents. Qualified debt service. Interest parking. Nine thousand, three hundred dollars to fourteen thousand, five hundred forty-two dollars. Total municipal debt service excluded from caps. Fifteen million, five hundred sixty-seven thousand, one hundred forty-three dollars, thirty-three cents to fifteen million, nine hundred sixty-one thousand, two hundred six dollars, ninety-five cents. H dash two, total general appropriations for municipal purpose excluded caps. Thirty-eight million, three hundred ninety-five thousand, five hundred ninety-four dollars, sixty-four cents to fifty-six million, two hundred two thousand, nine hundred seventy-one dollars, seventy-three cents. Total general appropriation excluded from caps. Thirty-nine million, five hundred twenty-four thousand, six hundred thirty-eight thousand, forty cents to fifty-seven thousand, three hundred thirty-two dollars, excuse me, fifty-seven million, three hundred thirty-two thousand, fifteen dollars, forty-nine cents. Subtotal general appropriations. Items H one and O. Two hundred seventy-four million, three hundred fifty-five thousand, five hundred sixty dollars, sixty-seven cents to two hundred seventy-five million, three hundred ninety-eight thousand, fifty-four dollars and sixty-four cents. Reserve for uncollected tax. Five million, nine hundred eight thousand, two hundred sixty-one dollars, eighty, eight cents to five million, nine hundred eight thousand, two hundred fifty-two dollars, seventy-four cents. Total general appropriations. Two hundred and eighty million, two hundred sixty-three thousand, eight hundred twenty-two dollars, fifty-five cents to two hundred eighty-one million, three hundred six thousand, three, three hundred seven dollars, thirty-eight, thirty-eight cents. Be it further resolved that two certified copies of this resolution be filed with the Director of Local Government Services for the certification of the municipal budget so amended. The budget amended will be published in the Trenton Times in the issue of September twelve, twenty twenty-five. A hearing on the budget amendment will be held in Municipal Building on September sixteen, twenty twenty-five, five thirty P M. At which time, if placed objections to said budget amendment may be presented by taxpayers or other interested persons. It is hereby certified that this is a true copy of resolution, of resolution amending the budget approv- approved by the governing body on September tenth, twenty twenty-five. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this order at this time?
Um, Mr. Garcia, I'm gonna allow Mr. Cherry to come in and just kinda highlight basically the amendments to the budget, please.
Good evening, members of council and members of the public. Uh, first, let me start by thanking our wonderful city clerk, Brenda Garcia, because uh, that was a yeoman's job.
Yes.
He deserves the accolades for that. Hopefully next year we'll have at least ten days between the local finance board meeting and the council meeting, uh, but calendars work out the way they like. Uh, this presentation is brief, uh, as there are not, um, a very large number of changes from the introduced budget. The, the biggest changes are, uh, twofold. One is that we requested forty-five thousand, uh, forty-five million dollars in transition aid and we were only granted forty million, uh, forty and a half million. And then the second largest change is, uh, a little over twelve million dollars removed outside of the cap, but it's still expended in the same way. Uh, this is just a budget overview. Our total budget is two hundred eighty-one point three million, um, which is a slight decrease from last year. Uh, the municipal tax rate again is a two percent increase and that is mandated by the Department of Community Affairs. We received, as I said, forty point five million in transition aid and then ten million in capital city aid. Uh, I know this can't be viewed, it's too far away, but this represents the same changes that you see in your documents. And for the members of the public, as always, this presentation will be made available on our website so you can download it and look at these numbers if you'd like. Just another overview, none of these, uh, pie charts have changed since the introduced budget. Um, the shifts are, are minimal, uh, but this just shows you where our revenue comes from. About thirty percent for taxes, uh, the next largest amount is, uh, state aid, general state aid and then, you know, see transition aid and capital city and then there as well. Uh, these are appropriations, again, this pie chart hasn't really changed since the introduced budget. Uh, some of the numbers have just shrunk slightly, but as per usual, about forty percent of our budget is salary and wages. Uh, another twenty percent is on our various insurances. The department costs themselves are nearly fifty percent of our budget. Fringe benefits is a little over another quarter. Uh, debt service is about six percent. Uh, and then, you know, the rest is utility, shared services, various other things. The tax impact of budget, as I said in the, in the overview, um, the municipal tax rate is being increased from three point six seven two to three point seven zero seven, which is, um, a little over three cents, about three and a half cents. And again, that's a two percent increase as mandated by DCA as part of the transition aid process. Uh, for a property assessed at a hundred thousand dollars, the tax increase would be about thirty-five dollars per year. Uh, the average house in the city of Trenton is about fifty to sixty thousand dollars, so that's gonna be around eighteen to twenty dollars, uh, per year of tax impact. And that is all I had to say. Are there any questions from members of the council?
Um, I'm gonna go for, for council members.
Thank you, Council President, I appreciate that. Um, thank you for the presentation, Mr. Corey. Uh, so this, uh, mainly two questions. So, uh, we said that forty percent of our budget goes as salaries and wages.
Approximately, yeah.
Approximately. So is that average for municipality of our size?
Um, it, it's average for basically any municipality, uh, but it, it really depends. Uh, for us, we've, we, uh, over time have kind of taken our budget down to the bare bones. So, uh, to me, I think that the, the most appropriate way to look at our expenditures is not necessarily to try to judge percentages, it's to look at what we feel we need. Um, and of course, the largest departments that make up those salary wages are public service. So for us, it just is, um, the nature of kind of paring down our budget to the bare necessities, that, that's what you see. The more, uh, the more resourced, the more well-resourced a municipality is, the more you may see them providing, uh, you may, you may see that forty percent shrink, uh, if they have additional resources.
Because we're able to budget other items throughout so we can improve quality of life and different things. So it was that much of a percentage.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And any other question I have is, so I do see that I imagine my colleagues, a fair number complains that things aren't exactly easy to find on our city website and then hopefully, yeah, that could something get approved over time, but
Of course.
If you could advise folks, um, particularly, you know, ones who, uh, might see this after the fact on Zoom, how's the best way, what's the best way to navigate the website so they can find this presentation? Because I think this will be helpful to a lot of, a lot of our citizens.
Absolutely. So, uh, the best thing I can say is if you go to our website, we have a search bar and if you just search for budgets, that's the best way to do it. Um, but in addition, we have a whole page dedicated just to the budget. Um, and if you click on government, which is a tab at the very top of the budget, of the, uh, website, I'm sorry, uh, you'll see a list of uh, you'll see a list of items. One, and that list is alphabetical, civic budgets is in that list. If you click on that, you'll be taken to our budget page and you'll be able to see budgets all the way back to the year two thousand. Uh, and we started doing these presentations in this format. It looks like, I'm on the site right now, it looks like there's, we started this in about two thousand fifteen. And so from then on, you can see both the introduced budget, the adopted budget, and the two presentations for both of those things.
Gotcha. Um, and is there any way, maybe just put a little splash ticker on the front page of the website just for this presentation so people could quickly find it and then find all the other stuff by going through that?
Yes, I can, I can work with our, our website team to put a news post about this presentation so that it shows up.
That'd be perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you. Um, Mr. Cherry, I have one question. Um, I saw that you said that thirty percent of it, of our revenue comes from taxes, from our property taxes, correct?
Yes, approximately.
And then I see that, I just wanted to know, is that including all of the vacant properties? Like is that a projection for all of the vacant properties that we have sold, used last year?
Uh, property sales are different, uh, a different revenue category.
Okay.
This represents properties currently owned by non-government or taxpaying entities and the assessed value of those properties and what taxes we receive from those properties. So once properties do, uh, find their way into hands of, of taxable owners, those will be added to these lists, uh, but depending on where they are in the process, they're not necessarily paying taxes just yet.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cherry.
Thank you, of course.
And Mr. Cherry, with that being said, then I'm able to open up the floor for any members of the public that wish to speak to this resolution at this time. Very well, I will move on to, I will take the vote for, actually, Madam President, if you want, ask for a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash three forty-five.
May I have a motion to approve twenty-five, twenty-five dash three forty-five? Second.
Roll call. Uh, Councilwoman Figaro-Kendall.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Moving on to Resolution two twenty-five dash three forty-six. This is a resolution to approve the calendar year twenty twenty-five municipal utility budget amendments for the city of Trenton. And I will do same and read this one as well.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
I have some different numbers. I don't have three forty-six.
You have listed three forty-
Three forty-five utility and three forty-four for the municipal.
I had that as well, and I just, I changed it because the resolutions I provided with have three forty-six and three, three forty- hold on, three forty-five and three forty-six listed.
Three forty-six utility.
Correct.
And then three forty-four, uh, three forty-five is the municipal budget.
Yes.
Alright, got you. Thank you.
No problem. Resolution to approve calendar year twenty twenty-five municipal utility budget amendments for the city of Trenton. Whereas the city of Trenton introduced budget for calendar year twenty twenty-five was approved on the sixth day of May, twenty twenty-five, and whereas the public hearing on said budget was held on the seventh day of August, twenty twenty-five, and whereas it is desired to amend said approved introduced budget, now therefore be resolved by the City Council, the City of Trenton County Apparcer, State of New Jersey that the following amendments to the introduced approved budget of calendar year twenty twenty-five be made. First number is from, second number is to, dedicated water utility budget. It says here, number ten, dedicated revenues for water utility. Operating surplus anticipated eight million six hundred forty-eight thousand five hundred eighty-six dollars to seven million nine hundred and seven thousand five hundred eighty dollars and thirteen cents. Water rents, forty-eight million five hundred and nine thousand one hundred ninety-three dollars and eighty-two cents to forty-nine million nine hundred ninety-two thousand one hundred fourteen dollars eighty-two cents. Fire hydrant services, one million sixty-seven thousand one hundred twenty-four dollars to five hundred fifty-eight thousand one hundred twenty-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents. Total, total water utility revenues, sixty million twenty-four thousand nine hundred three dollars eighty-two cents to sixty million two hundred fifty-seven thousand eight hundred twenty-four dollars eighty-two cents. Qualified bond payment and interest, five million one hundred fifteen thousand dollars to five million three hundred forty-seven thousand nine hundred twenty-one dollars. Total water utility appropriations, sixty million twenty-four thousand nine hundred three dollars eighty-two cents to sixty million two hundred fifty-seven thousand eight hundred twenty-four dollars eighty-two cents. Dedicated sewer utility budget, dedicated revenues for sewer utility. Rents, eleven million nine hundred sixty-eight thousand nine hundred eight dollars and sixty-seven cents to eleven million nine hundred sixty-nine thousand five hundred eight dollars and sixty-seven cents. Special sewer rentals, zero to thirty-one thousand nine hundred dollars. Total sewer utility revenues, thirteen million six hundred ninety-four thousand three hundred twenty dollars sixty-seven cents to thirteen million seven hundred twenty-six thousand eight hundred twenty dollars sixty-seven cents. Appropriations for sewer utility, qualified bond payment and interest, six hundred ninety thousand dollars to seven hundred twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Total sewer utility appropriations, thirteen million six hundred ninety-four thousand three hundred twenty dollars sixty-seven cents to thirteen million seven hundred twenty-six thousand eight hundred twenty dollars and sixty-seven cents. Dedicated parking utility budget, appropriations for parking utility. Operating salary and wages, nine hundred thousand, nine hundred one thousand three hundred fifty-three dollars and four cents to eight hundred ninety-four thousand two hundred ninety-three dollars and sixty cents. Qualified bond principal and interest, sixty-three thousand three hundred eighty-three dollars and twenty-two cents to seven, seventy thousand four hundred forty-two dollars and sixty-two, sixty-six cents. Total parking utility appropriations, two million six hundred ninety-two thousand two hundred ninety-four dollars and eight cents to two million six hundred ninety-two thousand two hundred ninety-four dollars and eight cents. Be it further resolved that two certified copies of this resolution be filed with the Director of Local Government Services for the certification of municipal budget so amended. The budget amendment will be published in the Trenton Times in the issue of September twelve, twelve, two thousand twenty-five. A hearing on the budget amendment will be held at the Municipal Building on September sixteen, two thousand twenty-five, at five thirty P M, which time and place objections to said budget amendment may, may be presented by taxpayers or other interested persons. It is hereby certified that this is a true copy of the resolution, of the resolution amending the budget approved by the governing body on September tenth, two thousand twenty-five. And if there is nothing additional from administration, Madam President, then I would ask you, well, no, I would ask whether any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time. I've seen none, Madam President. If you want, ask for a motion to approve the resolution. Sorry, resolution.
May I have a motion to approve?
Show vote. Roll call. Councilwoman Figaro-Kendall.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. And with that being done, Madam President, I believe I am able to ask for a motion to approve resolution, which is going to be number twenty-five dash three sixty, and that will be resolution adopting the calendar year municipal budget.
May I have a motion to approve twenty-five, three sixty?
Show vote.
Second.
Roll call. Councilwoman Figaro-Kendall.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Moving on to public comment for agenda items only. If I could have a public comment clipboard at this time. And Madam President, I have one individual signed up for public comment for docket items only. And to the public, public comment is five minutes in duration for each individual. You may address any item on the docket that you wish. The council is not obligated to respond, if you give me one moment, Miss Vaughn. Miss Vaughn, if you'll bear with me one moment, please. I just have to, uh, change my outfit here. Go right ahead.
Okay. Uh, good evening, Council. Uh, Robin Vaughn, eleven hundred Stuyvesant Avenue, uh, city of Trenton. And, um, I just wanted to speak very quickly, uh, about the ordinances and the sale of city-owned property. Uh, it's like twenty-two, it's about eighteen, being sold on second reading. I think there's about a few other on first reading, and I just want to, there's a lot of chatter in the city about these properties and rather, they are being sold, uh, clear title, that the titles are actually clear, and there aren't any leads on them, particularly regarding to water bills. So I just want the public and everyone who's buying these properties, that these are, these liens are clear and that the terms of these sales are legit. So, and, um, because there are properties that have been known to have massive water bills associated with them, and I just wanted to know how the city and how the Economic Development Department are handling the, that particular debt. Like for instance, the hotel has a massive water bill associated with it. Mercer Campus as well. So I just want to be certain that we are all cognizant of that. And then there was a ordinance that was passed by Councilwoman, uh, Feliciano, twenty-three zero three seven, about rates and meter charges around water and folks illegally tapping into the water supply and, uh, and that's revenues aren't being accounted for. So, and then I just wanted to comment on Resolution, uh, twenty-five, three fifty-three, uh, resolution amending, uh, authorize, they authorizing a shared services agreement between the city of Trenton and Mercer County. I just wanna understand what's the ratio of the burden that the city of Trenton shares? And I just wanna make sure that the county is contributing its fair share. Because too often than not, when we have shared service agreement with the county and other governments, the burden is always on Trenton. We always contribute the most. So, um, and then the other one are the emergency contracts. There are two, twenty-five, three fifty-one, and there's an emergency contract for twenty-five, three fifty-two. It appears it's beyond our borders. I don't understand how that is classified as an emergency contract. And too often in government, emergency contracts are being utilized to usurp the fair and open process and competitive bid process. So, uh, we wanna make sure that these emergency contracts aren't being utilized to do that. And I think that's all I have for, yeah, the docket items. Thank you.
Thank you.
That, excuse me, Madam President, that's the only individual I have for public comment for agenda items only. At this time, if you would, you asked for a motion to approve communications petitions and reports.
May I have a motion to approve?
Show vote.
Second.
Thank you. Moment, please. Roll call. Councilwoman Figaro-Kendall.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Madam President, if you want, ask for approval of the minutes of August, I believe that's August seventh of two thousand twenty-five.
Yes, may I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Show vote.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call. Councilwoman Figaro-Kendall. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. And Madam President, that brings us to ordinances for second reading and public hearing. Ordinance twenty-five dash eighteen. Ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as one hundred forty-two to one hundred forty-four East State Street identified on the city tax map as block five oh four, block five, pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, twelve, thirteen C to one thirty-eight East State LLC for the sale price of ninety-five thousand nine hundred dollars. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want, ask for a motion to approve.
May I have a motion to approve twenty-five, zero eighteen?
Show vote.
Thank you.
Council President.
Um, uh, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, just wanna say, uh, just, I wanted to add regarding this, that some conversation is, uh, been opened on repairing, defending about one property. I mentioned last meeting, the old front tires, that's very positive. Uh, just want to say I'm, uh, support this, uh, ordinance, but going forward, I do think we need to make sure that administration, the planning department, uh, zoning, uh, you know, that we are working on some parking solutions for downtown as we hopefully grow and fill in a lot of new storefronts so people have place to park, uh, customers and citizens alike. So it's gonna be important to our future. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilwoman Williams. And also, if, if I could, um, can I ask maybe someone from administration? I don't know, that would be Mr. Beach, but just so that, um, the concern that was brought up about clear titles, can we, um, speak to that to make sure that the properties are being sold and they're not being sold with any utility bill, bills attached?
Yes. Um, thank you, Council President Jim Beach, Chief of Staff. These are all city-owned properties, so because they're city-owned properties, when they, you know, the city generally will acquire them through foreclosure, and in that foreclosure process, whether it's because of non-payment of taxes or whether it's because of their failure to pay their water bill, all of that gets cleared out by the city taking possession of them. You know, these are also, what you are passing here by ordinance is not the final step in the process. There's also gonna be closure of the sale between the purchaser and the city, and certainly they have the opportunity during that process to do any kind of title search to see if there's any kind of encumbrance on, on the property, but there should not be.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam President, Councilwoman Figueroa-Keppert.
Yeah, um, I just wanted to address, I mean, this had come up before where we wanted kind of clarity on, you know, why we're selling these properties for what we are versus assessed value. And, I mean, I still am not seeing that spelled out in ways we had asked for it to be spelled out, um, which is a concern for me. Some of these properties are assessed at exponential amounts and then, you know, being sold for as little as a thousand dollars, like one particular, we'll be seeing soon, is assessed at seventeen thousand eight hundred dollars, and yet we're selling it for a thousand dollars. I just don't understand the rhyme or reason again for some of these sales, and why they're going for the prices that they're going for. Um, and for that, and that's something that was asked for, and I will see it on all of them. Uh, I just don't feel comfortable voting in affirmative for these properties. But I just wanted to put that out there, hopefully in the future, that's still something that can be done, uh, where it just makes more sense why we're selling some of these properties for, for what we are.
Councilwoman, we had presented to this council in executive session different factors that we took into account or take into account reaching our pricing in these, um, from the city's perspective, from a negotiating point of view, we're not going to put those out for the public, so they won't be included in nominations such as this. If there are specific questions about specific properties, you know, I'm happy to have that discussion in executive session, but respectfully, it would not be appropriate to have this discussion on the open forum.
Okay, respectfully put that on the record, I'll be upstanding for these votes. Thank you.
That's understood.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcia, are you ready?
Certainly. Roll call, Councilwoman Figueroa-Keppert.
Abstained.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash nineteen. Ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as thirty-eight Ward Avenue, identified on the city tax map as block two-five-seven-zero-two, lot twenty-two, pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, twelve, thirteen B five, to Carmen C. Soto for the sale price of one thousand dollars. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Maybe I have a motion to approve, twenty-five, nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Figueroa-Keppert.
Abstained.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash twenty-four. Ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as one, uh, ten forty-seven South Broad Street, and identified on the city tax map as block s- one-seven-nine-zero-one. Lot twelve, pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, twelve, thirteen B five, to Yoni Vasquez for the sale price of one thousand dollars. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Maybe I have a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Council, uh, Councilwoman Figueroa-Keppert.
Just want to note this one for the record, Council President, thank you. This is one of the properties, um, that is assessed for seventeen thousand eight hundred dollars, being sold for a thousand dollars. Thank you.
Roll call.
Roll call, thank you. Roll call, Councilwoman Figueroa-Keppert.
No.
Noted. Councilwoman Frisbee.
No.
Noted. Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
No.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion failed. Ordinance twenty-five dash twenty-seven. Ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as Barton Avenue, and identified on the city tax map as block two-two-four-zero-two, lot thirty-three, pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, twelve, thirteen B five, to Vellaranes
Good job.
I don't know. For the sale price of five thousand dollars. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Maybe I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Madam President.
Uh, Councilwoman Figueroa-Keppert. Thank you. Um, again, I just want to note this one for the public as well. Um, just to note disparity, this property is assessed value at five thousand one hundred dollars and is being sold for five thousand dollars. Thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call. Councilwoman Figueroa-Keppert.
Abstained.
Noted. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash eighty-eight. Ordinance creating position of building inspector apprentice for the Department of Housing and Economic Development, Division of Technical Services. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Motion, ma'am, we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Figueroa-Keppert.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Council President.
Councilwoman, uh, Frisbee. So I would like to just, Mr. Garcia, and to, uh, council, in light of just looking at what, uh, ordinance twenty-five dash zero-two-four, it's seen, that I did not look at it, um, visibly, um, on the map, on the map, um, to see if, uh, that it looks on here on paper. I'd like to know if I can change the response. My response.
Council President.
Um, uh, let me, uh, Mr., one of the council, Mr. Kay, can she change her?
Oh.
Got it. Uh, Councilwoman Figueroa-Keppert.
Thank you. Um, Councilwoman Frisbee's request is noted and is valid. Um, what should be noted, however, is that the lot size in the photos, um, that we see is considerably small, is not available at, however, there is, there's question concerning the assessment of that property being seventeen thousand plus dollars. Um, a- and why is that assessment being made? Is, is this being done on other properties or not? So I feel like, um, again, where Councilwoman Frisbee's, um, request is valid, I think that this should be corrected or maybe reassessed and then brought back to the table and voted on at that time, um, with proper numbers and maybe a valid assessment put into place before reconsideration of the vote, and that's, um, that is my request at this time, so that these things can be done purely, um, in accordance with standard moving forward.
So, so my question is going to be, thank you for that, um, Councilman Frisbee and Figueroa-Keppert, I mean, it's a good point, but I would say, will we still have to do the reconsideration just to even, to pull it, because I would hate for it to fail tonight? Or should we do the?
And also, is that the reconsideration on the floor there is, right, isn't that what we do with that, or is it first, and then reconsideration?
Yes. Got it, thank you. So, so may we have a reconsideration motion forward twenty-five, zero twenty-four?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second. Roll call. Councilwoman Figueroa-Keppert.
Also, I just want a little clarity on what this reconsideration means.
I'll defer to one of the attorneys.
Reconsidering.
Reconsidering.
Right. So this is a motion to be able to reconsider, so that you'll be able to vote once again as a council on the ordinance.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. With that being said, um, motion to approve ordinance twenty-five dash twenty-four.
We don't approve this, okay, so may we have a motion to approve, um, twenty-five, zero twenty-four?
So moved.
Second.
Council President.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Keppert. So again, I would ask that this get tabled, um, to a further meeting, just so that assessment value can be redone and represented to us, um, so that it look fair.
Council President.
Councilwoman, uh, Williams.
Thank you. I'd just, uh, would like to, uh, say I agree with my colleague, Councilwoman Figueroa-Keppert. Uh, this seems a little bit more messy than, than at face, so just so we would be able to hopefully table it, bring it back clean, um, and we can get any resolved questions answered, uh, I would, I would suggest that we do that.
Council President.
Councilwoman Frisbee. I'm in agreement with Councilwoman Figueroa-Keppert that we should table it until we get the correct numbers.
Yes. Thank you so much. So I'm going to ask for us to have a motion to table twenty-five dash zero twenty-four, do we have, I do have, because we had a motion.
I'm humbling, Madam President, if we could have Councilwoman Frisbee to withdraw her motion for the reconsideration. Or for the, uh, reconsider.
Reconsideration of twenty-five dash zero two four.
Yes.
Hold on, is that motion the second on the floor? Then we got to go through that.
So we got to go through it.
Noted. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash ninety-three. Ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as sixty-eight Seventy Evans Avenue, identified on the city tax map as block eight-nine-oh-two, lots twenty-one and twenty, pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, twelve, thirteen C to Mario Zorilla for an Engels Mejia for the sale price of six thousand dollars. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Maybe I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Roll call, Councilwoman Figueroa-Keppert.
Abstained.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five ninety-four. Ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as Nine Federal Street, identified on the city tax map as block nine thousand three, lot forty-two, pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, twelve, thirteen C, to Wells and Sierra de Hada for the sale price of five thousand dollars. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Maybe I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Figueroa-Keppert.
Abstained.
Noted. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash ninety-five. Ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as Forty-four Budinot Street, identified on the city tax map as block twenty-six-oh-two, lot twenty-two, pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, twelve, thirteen C to Juve Trevetti for the sale price of five thousand dollars. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Maybe I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Roll call, Councilwoman Figueroa-Keppert.
Abstained.
Noted. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Orders twenty-five dash ninety-six.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-five dash ninety-six. Ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as fifty-one Chestnut Ave- Avenue, identified on the city tax map as block thirt- one-three-two-oh-three, lot twelve, pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, twelve, thirteen C, to Paradigm Venture Holdings LLC for a sale price of twenty-five thousand dollars. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Maybe I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Figueroa-Keppert.
Abstained.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Uh, yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash ninety-seven. Ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as nineteen West Ingham Avenue, identified on the city tax map as block seven-oh-oh-two, lot six, pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, twelve, thirteen C to Tracy Sythax for the sale price of three thousand five hundred dollars. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Maybe I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Figueroa-Keppert.
Abstained.
Noted. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash ninety-eight. Ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as five-thirty-five to five-thirty-seven Glide Stone Avenue, identified on the city tax map as block two-eight-six-zero-one, lot twenty-five, pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, twelve, thirteen C to Lucidania Espinal Rodriguez for the sale price of five thousand dollars. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Maybe I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Roll call, Councilwoman Figueroa-Keppert.
Abstained.
Noted. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash ninety-nine. Ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as three-eighteen North Clinton Avenue and three-twenty Rear North Clinton Avenue, and identified on the city tax map as blocks seventeen-oh-one, lots thirty-three and thirty-five, pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, twelve, thirteen C to Ruby G. Bedeman. Gr- Gr- Grulha. For Grulha, Grulha, for the price, sale price of six thousand dollars. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Maybe I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Figueroa-Keever. Noted. Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carry. Ordinance 25-100, ordinance authorizing sale of city-owned property commonly known as 112 Cabler Avenue identified on the city tax map as block 27204, lot 6 pursuant to NJSA 481213C to Wendy A. Cabrera for the sale price of $5,000. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to the ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Maybe we have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Roll call, Councilwoman Figueroa-Keever.
Upstaying.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carry. Ordinance 25-101, ordinance authorizing sale of city-owned property commonly known as 75 Poverson Avenue identified on the city tax map as block 14105, lot 7 pursuant to NJSA 481213C to Huberlin Cabrera and Arrevalo F. Zalada for the sale price of $5,000. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to the ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Maybe we have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Figueroa-Keever.
Upstaying.
Noted. Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carry. Ordinance 25-102, ordinance authorizing sale of city-owned property commonly known as 27 Hampton Avenue identified on the city tax map as block 26402, lot 1 pursuant to NJSA 481213B5 to Diego Barrios for the sale price of $2,500. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to the ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Maybe we have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Roll call, Councilwoman Figueroa-Keever.
Upstaying.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carry. Order 25-103, ordinance authorizing sale of city-owned property commonly known as 39 Summerell Avenue identified on the city tax map as block 1701, lot 54 pursuant to NJSA 481213B5 to Ruth Rose Hawkins for the sale price of $1,500. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to the ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Maybe we have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Figueroa-Keever.
Upstaying.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carry. Ordinance 25-105, ordinance regulating commercial and business lease rent increases within the city of Trenton. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to the ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Maybe we have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Figueroa-Keever.
Upstaying.
Noted.
That's not a thing she said, why? Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, yes. Apologize.
Okay, noted. Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carry. Order 25-106, order authorizing conveyance of abandoned city properties slated for demolition to local developers as an alternative to demolition under the Neighborhood Redevelopment and Revitalization program. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to the ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Maybe we have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Council President? Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you very much, ma'am. I'd just like to ask if some of the administration, AGD, could come up and speak. I think this is a very interesting ordinance, this conveyance, and I think it's something that, I don't know that you need for Trenton to do, but I think it's something that more people should know about because this is going to rather than demo a lot of properties and try to turn into livable housing, I think that's something important that we should be able to share.
Good evening, Councilwoman Beach, Chief of Staff.
Thank you, Mr. Beach. If you could just highlight what this ordinance will do and why, how it came together, maybe, and why it's important. Because I think something like this, I don't know that it's unique to Trenton, but I know that this is something that if it works out well, it would be a really good model for us, and I'd like to see more people hear about it from here.
Yes, thank you. So, the city has, we're not sure exactly what the count is of structures that have been condemned or need to be condemned. The cost to the city of demolishing one of these structures depends, generally runs anywhere between $40,000 if there's no side load repair up to $60,000 if there is a side load repair necessary because it's adjoining another property. We were approached by these three particular builders who are known to the city, and I believe to councils for their work and their ability to not only rehabilitate but also to make sure that the buildings are stabilized. So they would go in, they would stabilize these buildings, and then rehabilitate them into living quarters. So rather than incur the cost of demolition, the mayor, actually, this was the mayor's idea, was to convey these, to these builders at no cost in order for them to then rehabilitate and stabilize the buildings, put them back on the tax rolls for the city. To your point of expanding this project, yes, we don't, we hope this is not a one-shot deal. The only caveat is we need to ensure that whatever contractors we're using for these type of projects are capable of doing the stabilization and the rehabilitation. And like the housing projects that we've just gone through, we need to, we as a city need to ensure that whomever we're selling them to, that they're following through with be it stabilization, be it rehabilitation, but that they're not going to let them just sit out there again and rot for another decade.
And the only question I have is, do we have any type of an idea of what the sunset might be on this, or is there a specific number of years that's the goal for all these properties to be developed hopefully?
You don't, can't put a number for all, all the properties. Frankly, we're still trying to get a grasp of how many of them there are out there. But in terms of how long we would intend to give these contractors, every contractor who would be taking this on, probably, you know, estimating 18 months to two years to stabilize and rehabilitate, and, you know, like the other properties, if they don't fulfill that, we then claw them back again.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
No problem, thank you. Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Certainly. Councilwoman Figueroa-Keever?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carry. Moving on to resolutions. Madam President, are there any resolutions that you or the council wish to extract from questions this evening or from a potential consent agenda?
Councilwoman first. Councilwoman Williams?
Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
25-354.
354.
Then 25-348. And then 25-349. And then 25-352. And that's it.
But you did say, so maybe I have Director Wilson please come forth for 25-354.
Good evening, Director Steve Wilson. So, good evening, very much. So I just wanted to have a conversation. This is a nice substantial grant for $10 million to girly for anti-violence out of school for the coming fiscal year. So I just wanted to, you know, hear from you what this grant would do for our efforts to try to quell violence in the city hopefully to really, you know, without a simple situation. Well, we accept this grant. It will be, well, I've paid a bid to institute the anti-violence program, which currently street teams. So we would be hiring an outside contractor or vendor to fulfill the target? Yes. And are there any particular activities that, you know, once the grant goes into operation that people, you know, should know about or that they will see? Yes, there are things such as safe passes around a school, mentorship for ramp services for both victims and offenders of violence, and things of that nature. Okay, thank you very much, sir. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Oh, and I thought I wanted to, next to you, send this. Thank you. Um, 348, Director, interim Director Vasquez.
Good evening, Council, interim Director Yolanda Vasquez for Housing and Economic Department.
Thank you very much, Director, appreciate you coming up. So these properties are generally in the same area, I believe, and they are, have been historically in bad shape for a long time, unfortunately. So do we have any idea what the timeline would be? Should it pass tonight after when the requisite for Carol to come out and actually do the demo and removal?
They're both, they're already mugged.
Oh, they're already mugged?
Yes. This is just to pay the monthly.
Okay, all right, because I haven't been down to that part in a while. All right, I just wanted to make sure. And then do we have any other vendors coming up that we, you know, need to talk about?
I would have to double check. There is a list that was approved by council on a PO, so he's currently working on those now.
Gotcha. And are we behind on any other payments?
No, actually, that's the last one.
Because we got, came on council together, we were behind by a lot.
Yeah.
So that's great to hear. All right, thank you very much. Uh, can I send a gentleman?
Consent, thank you. And Director Alex Murray? For, we are sorry. Uh, 25-39.
Also, this sector representing Director Alex.
Hello, Mr. White, thank you so much for being here to some directors. So I just wanted to have a kind of a talk on what this equipment will do, the chiller equipment. And I don't recognize that as something that we purchased before, but I could be wrong.
No, this is for the police station. We've been having an issue over the year, last year with the code system. And we had a temporary unit that was in the yard of the police station. It's having a problem over time, and to change a unit has been very difficult. So this, this one's going to replace the whole unit of the police station.
And do you have an idea of when that might be over?
Um, I don't have a date, okay, but prior, probably this work will be done before the year ends.
Okay, excellent. All right, thank you very much. I can send a gentleman?
And... That directory sample for 25, oh, no, 25-352.
Good evening, Director Sato, Trenton Water.
Good evening, Director, very much. So I wanted to just ask you to come up, particularly since the roof is kind of infamous and famous at the same time. So when, if everyone, this is approved tonight, and I know what, I like to ask for timelines, and I have period of limitations on that. Do we have a rough idea of how long it will take for it to start and when we can expect completion?
Oh, the roof, it's, because we declared emergency, it's almost done.
Oh, excellent, good.
There's some sort of trims and stuff like that, but it's safe. So we had to act fast in this because the roof is deteriorating very badly, and water was coming in, the electrical appliances and stuff like that in the building.
Okay, so any leaks that we had previously that were controversial because of trying to patch and cover equipment, that will no longer be the situation?
That will no longer be the situation.
And do you think this would be done by end of the month or like mid-October?
I think it should be done by next week.
Oh, excellent.
Yes. The main part, the leak, there's no leaking right now, it's just trims, it's just trimmed, the edges that they finalize now, but the leaks are patched. Both here at Quarters Street and other plant.
Hopefully Mother Nature won't test this too much in the next few weeks.
I will be ready for it.
Okay, good to hear.
Be ready.
All right, thank you very much, Director.
Okay, thank you.
Send a gentleman? Thank you.
Mr. Garcia, I do want to just say for, uh... 3, 25-355, the process for the lien, um, I know there was some concerns about where they're being advertised for people to purchase tax sales certificates, and so I just wanted to let everyone know that after asking and getting a response from our tax assessors, anyone who was interested in looking for any tax sale liens to purchase, they can visit And if constituents are interested in purchasing a city-held lien, they can send an email to taxcollector@trentonnj.org. Thank you, just wanted to speak there out loud.
Madam President, can I interrupt you for one moment? I do have...
That was different anyway. That was different, I just wanted to say that for 355.
Oh, okay. With that being said, if you would, if you'll doze me for one moment, I do have two walk-in walk-on resolutions.
Yes, all right.
That are listed here, and I'd love to read those by title. They're numbered 358, 359.
Which one is 358?
358 will be a resolution authorizing a contract awarded to turn out fire and safety for the purchase and delivery of 100 sets of station gear awarded through New Jersey Cooperative Purchasing Alliance Pricing System number 11-BCCP in an amount not to exceed $84,590 for the Department of Health and Human Services and Department of Fire and Emergency Services. This is a one-time purchase. This procurement is funded by CDBG.
Maybe we have a motion to approve 25-358? Is that 358, go right?
358, correct. I'm sorry, I'll take that, that motion, Miss Figueroa-Keever.
Yes, and Frisbee, second.
Thank you, and Frisbee, second. Thank you. Roll call, Councilwoman Figueroa-Keever?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carry, thank you. And our walk-on resolution 359, resolution authorizing contract awarded to Firefighter One LLC for the purchase and delivery of 100 sets of head-to-toe turnout gears, one set per person, awarded through New Jersey State Contract T-0790, number 17, Fleet 00807 in an amount not to exceed $700,910. This is a one-time purchase. This procurement is funded by CDBG.
Maybe we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. And, Councilwoman Figueroa-Keever? I believe that there's a reason why this is an emergency, and I think that may be interesting. Or, or Maria Richardson? Yes, thank you.
Good evening, Maria Richardson, Business Administrator. Yes, usually, well, by regulations, HUD has allowed the municipalities, entitled municipalities, to use funding for eight years. So funding from 2018, we will be able to use it until 2026. Under the new administration, everybody that was working in HUD until the beginning of this year was let go, and the new administration just informed us last week that we have until September 27 to use the monies that we have available from 2018. And so this was a project that we were already working on to provide turnout gears for the Fire Department, but we actually needed to move the process forward to meet the September 27 deadline for the HUD.
Yes, Councilwoman Figueroa-Keever? Thank you, Maria Richardson, I just have one quick question. This is for the Fire Department, just want to know for clarity why this is being signed in from the Health and Human Services?
Because the Director of Health and Human Services is the administrator of the HUD funds, CDBG funds, and so he needs to, to be the person signing for compliance with HUD, otherwise they will not allow the reimbursement.
Thank you for that clarity.
Sure.
Appreciate it, thank you. Thank you.
If there's nothing else, I want to call Madam President.
Um, yep, multiple.
Certainly, Councilwoman Figueroa, Edinburgh.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisby.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you very much. Madam President, did we, as, were there any other additional questions on resolutions at this time?
No.
With that being said, Madam President, with the exception of the walk-on resolutions then, and those projects previously voted on, can I ask for a motion? If you want to ask for a motion to approve, consent agenda.
May we have a motion to approve, consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you, I'm sorry, who's the blue button?
Frisby.
Thank you, and, uh, Mr. Harrison, I appreciate that, thank you. Councilwoman Figueroa, Edinburgh.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisby.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. And with that being said, I'll move us to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance twenty-five dash one oh-seven, ordinance authorizing sale of city-owned property commonly known as twenty-three Oak Street, and identified on city tax map as block eighteen oh-three, lot ninety-three pursuant to NJSA forty-eight twelve thirteen C to M&amp;B Real Estates LLC for the sale price of ten thousand dollars. And Madam President, you want us for motion to approve?
May we have a motion to approve?
So, motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Uh, Councilwoman Figueroa, Edinburgh.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to state to the record, um, to Mrs. Jim Beach, uh, again, with these following four ordinances, it's not that I don't want to approve sale of city properties, um, I know that we've had this discussion, and I just, I want to see, like, current assessments on paper, um, and, and I want to have the sales kind of make complete sense as to what the current assessments are and, and what the sales are. You know, I don't want to see, um, two eight thousand square feet lots next to each other, you know, being assessed around the same, and one being sold for ten thousand, and one being sold for a thousand. I'm not saying that that's exactly what's happening here, but I would like to see more clarity in these sales and how we move forward. And I don't know if that is something that has to take place in executive session, as you suggested, or if it's maybe an email that all council can get ahead of time, that maybe not be in these packets? Um, just, just for more clarity. I don't want to continue to stay with some of these ordinances, um, because I can, I am for the, the property, uh, the, the sales of these properties. Can I just move to the next one?
Mr. Beach, I'm sorry.
Yes, Council President, I'm sorry. As to the issue of whether we can openly discuss the pricing, again, I mean, at least my position is that those pertain to negotiation of, you know, city contracts, and, you know, I would prefer not to do those in open, um, session here. When I presented the process to this council a number of weeks ago, there was some guidelines in there as to how HED was arriving at its prices. It's not going to be perfect, I assure you, it's not going to be perfect. If we were to update all the assessments, we would probably end up losing money on all these properties because of the cost of having to go out and redo all the assessments. I'm not sure how old or new some of these assessments are. It's not clear from Doug Pilot when the last assessment was done, which was why, that was only one of the factors in what the pricing rubric that I provided to council was. If there was a way to do it privately, without the public being privy to that information, and again, I'm going to defer to council, uh, maybe they can come up with an idea of how we can do that. But, you know, I think for each of the properties that's on there, they are relatively consistent with the approach that I had described to council, whether it be a non-conforming lot, a conforming lot, or, you know, a property that has a structure.
Thank you, I mean, and I agree, I agree, some of the property sales did make sense that I, that I stayed from, I, but I want to be consistent, and, you know, what I'm, what I'd like to see. And again, you know, some of these GIS assessments are not accurate at all, or not, you know, current at all. Um, so, I, I just, I personally would like to see that, and like I said, whether that's something that you can provide an email, um, or something that, you know, we'd have to go into executive session in the future, but I just, I just want fairness in all sales of these properties, and, and that's it, I just wanted to...
I don't disagree, Councilwoman, um, but also some of the prices that maybe on their DVD offers, yeah.
Uh, may we continue on, Mr. White?
Certainly, roll call, Councilwoman Figueroa, Edinburgh.
Stay.
Councilwoman Frisby.
Room one zero seven, second.
For one zero seven?
Yes. Yes.
Councilman?
One zero seven.
I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought we did one seven. Okay, my bad.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash one oh-eight, ordinance authorizing sale of city-owned property commonly known as twenty-two and twenty-four, West Endham Avenue and thirteen seventeen, Trent Street, and identified on city tax map as block eight six zero three, lots thirteen, fourteen, forty-one, and thirty-nine pursuant to NJSA forty-eight twelve thirteen C to Valerie M. Arthur for the sale price of fifty-one thousand dollars.
May we have a motion to approve? So, motion.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Figueroa, Edinburgh.
Stay.
Noted. Councilwoman Frisby.
I've stayed.
Noted as well. Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash one oh-nine, ordinance authorizing sale of city-owned property commonly known as forty-three Southern Street, identified on city tax map as block eleven oh-one, lot eight pursuant to NJSA forty-eight twelve thirteen B five to Hattie Q. Wilson for the sale price of one thousand one nine hundred fifty dollars.
May we have a motion to approve?
So, motion.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Figueroa, Edinburgh.
Stay.
Councilwoman Frisby.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash one ten, ordinance authorizing sale of city-owned property commonly known as one fifty-seven Rosemont Avenue, and identified on city tax map as block fifty-eight oh-two, lot twenty-two pursuant to NJSA forty-eight twelve dash thirteen C to Garland Barber for the sale price of five thousand dollars.
May we have a motion to approve?
So, motion.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Figueroa, Edinburgh.
I've stayed.
Councilwoman Frisby.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. And Madam President, those roll calls have been seen, at this time, we can move to public comment.
Yes, please.
And to the public, public comment will be five minutes for each individual listed. You may address any matter that you wish, the council is not obligated to respond. First individual listed for public comment is Larry Labou. Larry Labou left. The second person is illegible. I cannot make this out, all I can see here is there is a South Clinton Avenue address high with a one five, starts with a J, I'm not quite sure. I'll move on, Sandra Powell. Is that you? Uh, who? Is, uh, okay, thank you. Yes, I can see that now, thank you. That's it.
Is there? Oh, okay.
You can come over here.
Just hit the button, like you.
Uh, my concern is illegal breeding in Trenton, especially, and I'll put us at that animal force...
Ma'am, I'm sorry, can you just state your name, address for the record?
I did a best, six fifty South Clinton Avenue, Trenton, New Jersey. Okay. I'm con- I'm concerned about that, I'm illegal dog breeding in Trenton itself. I had reached out, touched out to animals force, when I wrote a lot of letters to the council people, I'm poor about the rights to, and it seemed like nobody's, they're entertaining it that year. And these people only have licenses for breeding dogs, there's too many dogs down there in the shelter, and some of the employees share with the staff at that animal shelter that they're just killing the dogs, like with death row. And they need to take it serious to hold these people captive, because when I was younger, you see, I could look at animal force, most around everywhere, visiting, you know, apartments and houses and stuff, to enforce the law, make sure the animal have licenses and stuff. And I, I've, personally, I know animals a lot, and I've seen every day, you know, animals are suffering in the street and stuff, but people walk past aisle, and hungry and stuff, dogs and cats, and they could spay noodles for free, instead of charging people, a lot of them can't afford to spay, and, and, um, cats and dogs. So, I mean, can, you know, somebody enforce, make animal, um, shelter do their job, they claim they show the staff.
Thank you so much.
Sandra, Sandra Powell.
Hello, good evening, everyone.
State your name.
I'm Sandra Powell, and address is ten fifty Lindell Avenue.
Thank you.
I had concerns about some property, but listening, some things got answered, and I see how it works now. And my thing was, multiple units, I'm interested in. Um, maybe to help people who may more have, like, mental disability, because I retired from the ant line forensics, and I'm interested in something where I could get funding to produce some services for people who don't even realize they have mental disabilities. So, that's my concern, I'm coming here, trying to find the right property, where I could maybe have ten units, um, or less. So, I'm just here trying to see what the next five years may bring in some type of properties like that in the city. And I'll be looking forward to property like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna say, um, if you wanted to speak to maybe our Housing Director, or she says she could probably give you some insight on where to look for those properties.
Victorius Eric.
And, and Mrs. Nina, we have our Director of Health here too, if you wanted to speak to him.
Good evening, it's a pleasure again, Victorius at Nineteen Morning Avenue. Um, my concern tonight is, uh, the requirements for law enforcement in police officers in Trenton, New Jersey. And, uh, the one that I'm more concerned, well, actually, the one I'm more concerned about is, uh, the education requirement, which is the, uh, high school program, or GED. I'm concerned about that because, uh, so, on the military, I've gotten into law enforcement, not law enforcement, it's part of, for, through justice, every three years, four months there. And when I realized that the simple law enforcement there was like a scale, that's my, that's my first sign, uh, legal, uh, scale of justice, I was enthused when I got there and realized that the prison was mistaken, prison down in Fort Dix territory, and it's run by the military, or overseen by the military. But, uh, the clientele, the officers were coming from different institutions upstate of New Jersey. And once I got there, being that I was already in the military, I knew about structure, there was no structure there, and those officers that came from other institutions to retire or have a nice, uh, safe, circle of environment, but if, uh, and my concern was that these are, I had to be accurate at high school, uh, high school students. And at the age they were, you know, my age, when I came in, twenty-five years old, and I'm never twenty-eight, and some have been there from high school and many years, about to retire, or twenty-five, yeah, that means that forty, fifty, and maybe sixty years old, still, uh, not disabled yet to be considered, uh, law enforcement officers by the way, law enforcement officers of the streets, the police officers. So, my concern was when, the group of justice is a need in law enforcement, at least two years of, uh, I'm at that Mercy County Community College, and those two years should be added on to high school requirement if you want to go into law enforcement. So, as they do in the military, I suggested, uh, Director Steve Wilson to go to the high schools and recruit from there, and that'd be known, after high school, with three years of college, then you are qualified to be a Trenton police officer, because you need it. Uh, and that, of course, is true of justice. It offers many, uh, professions, uh, that are out there besides law enforcement, politics, psychology, and, and, and it comes, many, many areas. That once you get that in your mind, you understand what's happening in the world, and you can transfer it to a full work college, you'll get further understanding if you want to go in a different direction besides law enforcement. My concern is that, uh, already offering, missing, uh, offering jobs to people who may want to apply, but if you're comfortable to high schools, uh, or, true high schools, we have still have, uh, and to do, and let them know in two years of college, according to justice, uh, you are qualified then to apply for law enforcement, and that will get a better selection of people who really want to be law enforcement, not someone who needs a job, or need paid from somewhere. And then, the veterans who are already been in law enforcement, not, not in the military, they got the military training, that very ways of military training, uh, they should have something, uh, included, before just put right there like that, and anybody that come out of high school right now, at that age, you know, truly did require, man, which means you couldn't make it, couldn't make it in high school, then you have like, maybe, uh, street, uh, street mentality, no matter how old you are, and you come as gangbanger, gangster, or loser of people of other races, and that's my main concern, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Robin Washington.
Good evening, my name is Robin S. Washington. I live at four four seven West Endham Street, Trenton, New Jersey. After putting out the agenda, what I have, uh, I'm going to make it a little brief. I'm still here, again, trying to purchase four 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 and four and four six, West Endham Street, which, those two vacant properties are located directly across from my home, where I live. I'm not giving definitive answers and ask you why I cannot purchase these properties. When I put in my application in September of two thousand nineteen, it was suggested to me by the city attorney that who is no longer here, to put in another application. And I'm trying to figure out, why do I have to put another, another application to me, which means this starts this process all over again, when I already have a application? when I already have an application on file. And just looking at the agenda item 25-106 regarding abandoned properties and just listening, that the proposal is for developers to take over these properties that need to be developed and make them into some type of housing. What I want to do at 444 and 446 West Ano Street is to do that very same thing. Build property for affordable housing for residents of the city. The thing that I am continuing to see is, and I'm gonna be politically correct when I say this, is individuals that don't look like me and don't look like my husband who are coming into this city, buying property with New York tags, who are not living in the city. And it is still happening. I'm aware that there's some type of proposal or something that has been authorized by the city, that these folks who are buying properties, who are not maintaining them, that are not fixing them up, that there's a fine fee schedule set in place for them to pay if they're not rehabbing their properties. I live in this city. I'm invested in this city. And I'm trying to understand what the problem is. If I submitted an application, the amount that I offered to pay for the property was not accepted. It was a counter offer, which I accepted and was willing to pay. And I was told that it would be forwarded to City Council in 2019. And it is September of 2025. And I still have not gotten a definitive answer other than the previous director for planning or housing, whatever the title is, telling me that, you know, the park on the street. I live on the street. I know what the park is like. I've been trying to get a meeting with the acting director, Alana Vasquez, for a few months now. I've left my contact information. And I have not received a call back, a phone call, nothing. I've stopped on different days at various times. And the response that I get is either she's between floors, she's in a meeting with the mayor, or she's out for lunch. At some point, a civil servant has a job to do. And also I'm asking for is a fair chance to purchase this property as I put in my application and be able to develop this property to make it for affordable housing for citizens of this city to live in. I live in this city. I don't have a New York tag. I don't have, I don't have tags that are registered in South Jersey or wherever these people that don't look like me are coming from. And I'm quite sure while I've seen them ride around Trenton looking at properties, the applications that they're, they're putting in don't outdate my application that I put in in 2019. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Washington.
Douglas Hughes.
Oh, he's, he's not here.
Okay. Robin Vaughn.
Robin Vaughn, 1100 Stigerson Avenue. And I just want to quickly thank Councilwoman Diggeroa Gettenberg. And yes, the math is not mathy. And I'm very disappointed that Jim Beach left because her questions are on point and very illegitimate. There is nowhere on the planet Earth will you sell, will you sell a property for less than the assessed value? Period in the story, not even mentioned market value. This is, we're talking assessed value. So, and I think the mindset of Jim Beach, unlike Ms. Gettenberg, Councilwoman Gettenberg, has ties to residency and the mindset of home rule. She's clearly advocating and fighting for Trenton to make sure Trenton gets the value that it's worth. She asked Jim Beach pointedly, "I'm concerned that a property assessed at 17,000 went for 1,000 and it could be in close proximity to 1,000." Jim Beach replied, "Well, that's what we negotiate, that's what the person was willing to pay us." See, if Jenna Gettenberg was negotiating that with that Gettenberg- Cat, Cat, Cattenberg, excuse me, I'm sorry, Councilwoman. If she was negotiating that, or any Trentonian who lives here, Ms. Washington, the woman who just spoke, who lives here, would have said, "No, that offers too low. I'm not selling that to you." But Jim Beach thought it was okay to undervalue Trentonians and say, "Oh, we'll take $1,000." See, that's why residency is important. Because, you know, I grew up in Uwe Township. And when I go to Uwe Township council meetings, I know everybody in Uwe Township pretty much. And particularly the people who work there, with the township. Those people like the BA, I believe his name is Aaron Watson. His parents, he lives there, he was born and raised in Uwe Township. He lives in his parents' home. He's the BA of Uwe Township. He's not gonna let anybody rule up in Uwe Township who don't live there. That's Jenna Gettenberg. We saw it transpire. Because a resident of your town will never undersell you, will never sell you out. That's a fact. Thank you, Councilwoman Gettenberg, for fighting for Trentonians. See, people don't live here like Ms. Washington. She should get prioritized. She wants to buy something in Trenton, she should get it. Without question, before anybody who doesn't live here. She's, she's contributing to the tax roll. We just saw that one of our deputy BA said, "Our taxes are gonna go with Trent, 2%. We only have 30% homeowner percentage." You know how you get homeowner rateables and ownership increase? You force everybody who works in the city of Trenton to get their asses here and they live here. You work in Trenton, you live in Trenton. Our residency law says so. And you have 30, I think it's 30 days, 60 days, 90 days. Hell, if wherever you live, you should, you should, I mean, wherever you work, you should live. That's the way municipal government works. It's not complicated. It's not rocket science. You don't have to go to MIT to figure it out. The framework is already in place. The laws are in place. Follow them. So thank you, Ms. Gettenberg. And I just want to say to the police director, learn to do your job, Mr. Bridget, and get compliant and overact. So the other issue is the police director. When, in, in the school district, when are we gonna fund the Explorer Program? To have 14 to 20-year-olds an opportunity to be trained and sponsored to work at the police department? We should get that. And I just want to say redevelopment should be, should be a moratorium, our redevelopment in the city of Trenton. We don't have the right mechanisms in place. We don't have our planning board. We don't have our zoning board. You got, we don't have court.
Ms. Vaughn?
Members, that is all the individuals I have listed for-
Thank you so much.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you so much. I'm talking to you, Mr. Garcia.
Your honor. Those are all the individuals. You know what? Take it away, man. I talked a lot today, go.
You wanna go first?
I'll let Councilwoman Diggeroa Gettenberg. Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for staying for the length of this meeting tonight. A couple of things that I wanted to address. Thank you, Ms. Vaughn, for that. I mean, I know I've expressed my concerns for the sale of the properties before and I do hope that something can come across that is a little more fair. I have addressed that before with Mr. Beach and I do hope that we can come to some type of consensus across the board so that we are not short, after Dominic Appelli, about the breeding that you have concerns with. Myself and Councilwoman Williams did write and author the breeding ordinance for the city of Trenton, unfortunately it has yet to be able to be enforced due to lack of the abilities of enforcement to try to figure out whether it's gonna be enforced under TPD or, you know, public health, I mean, Department of Health, you know, with the animal shelter. So those things are trying to get worked out. But I do agree with you, those are things that need to get honed in on so that we can, you know, lessen the number of animals that come into the animal shelter, one. And lessen the number of animals that are put on quote-unquote "death row," as you stated. I do think that that's something that we need to nip and nub and figure out how to do it. You know, the ordinance is in place and I'd love to see it move forward. Whether it's something that we need to tweak, you know, something that needs to get done. So I do agree with you. I believe you're in the building across from the Food Bazaar. I think that's like east or north. But those issues with animal breeding ordinances, like, I mean, animal breeding in general is across the entire city. So it's something we do have the title. So thank you for bringing that to the attention. Absolutely. I wanted to just also say that homecoming, Trenton High's homecoming is this Saturday on the 20th of September. The parade starts at 11:30 a.m. and the game starts at 1 p.m. I will be there as the president of the Trenton Central High School Alumni Association. We will be doing membership signup and we will be in the parade. If anybody's interested in coming, please be at the parade by 10:03. Show up for lineup around 10:30, 11 a.m. to walk in the parade with the alumni representing your year. Otherwise, just come buy a ticket for the game. Recently, I had a meeting with Department of Parks and Recreation interim director, Paul Harris, Police Director, Director Wilson, our community affairs officer in the South Ward, and others that were there for Patagon Park to discuss what we can do with that park. A lot of migrant activity there, drug activity, prostitution, so on and so forth. And the kids are not able to enjoy that very large, you know, off-the-cuff kind of park that is in that old Berg neighborhood, Adeline, Grant Smith, Beatty, so on and so forth. Foundation Academy has, has showed interest in trying to contribute to the betterment and the rehabilitation of that park as the new school will be built next August 2026. So that was, it was a great community meeting. We had a lot of input. And hopefully, we can invest some money into that park to, you know, try to deter the activity that's going on. South Ward CPAC is back to go for the summer. Next meeting is on September 25th at 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. in St. Bartholomew Church on South Clinton Avenue. Please come out. Police Director, Parks and Rec Director, Public Works Director have been invited. Fire will be there to do extermination, I mean, a fire extinguisher demonstration. So it would be great. I hope this South Ward does come out for that. Other than that, I have nothing else this evening. Thank you all for being here again and have a wonderful one. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman President?
Thank you, Council President. So I wanted to just thank first Mr. Cherry for doing the presentation of the budget. We greatly appreciate that. Mr. Garcia for your resistance, your resilience in reading the amendments into record. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Vaughn, for coming out as well and for your feedback. Ms. Idabes, we do need to find out what is going on with the illegal dogs. We definitely should not have any breeding going on. So that is something that we need to take up with. Please, I hope that she is connected with our health director who is here. If she's still here this evening. I'm glad that we already spoke with Sandra Powell. Mr. Victor, thank you for always being out here and your feedback and being concerned for the community. I did want to say to Chief Staff Beach, I appreciate the work that you do and I appreciate your diligence in getting the guidance that we do get from this day. So for the record, Ms. Vaughn, as you know, we cannot select who we sell properties to here in the city of Trenton. It is for those who put in the application. And some applications, like she said, in 2019, they simply, they were not processed for whatever reasons. But we are trying to get them on track. For those who are in this, with this administration, getting things done in decency and order, which is why we have the processes in place now so that we can get things back on track. I wanted to say thank you to Eric Maywar from the Division of Economic Development. He said, isn't here, but he came out to my West Ward Community Conversation last week and did an incredible job explaining the UEZ and just talking about what goes on in his division. And I also want to thank our fire director, Director Douglas, and his department. They came out and did a demonstration on how to properly put out fires, actually just using a fire extinguisher. We think that we know how to properly use it and how you actually should put a fire out. So thank you for that. It is recorded. For those of you who have not seen it, I know there is a demonstration here in the city as well. So thank you for that and gave us our certificates. I'm now certified. And I just want to thank everyone who came out, those who were not, who, I see a gentleman sitting in the back. I know there was a whole row of you that came. Thank you for staying for our meeting. And we thank those who didn't come out, but just were able to stay with us. Thank you for all expressive initiatives this evening. Our security in the back for being here and our diversity of staff and our counselors. I'm just remint portion of our city's mission statement, which is recognizing that the people of Trenton have made us guardians of the public trust. We are committed to govern with integrity and fiscal responsibility to seek excellence in the city's operation, to deserve all the city's people's respect and compassion. And I would be remiss if not, I didn't thank Councilwoman Williams for making sure that she recognized the ATE as well. Thank you and everybody getting safely this evening.
Thank you. Councilwoman Harson?
Well, I want to thank everybody for all the kind words. My mom's been going through cancer treatments, so I want to thank everybody for that. Again, I want to, as I said, to say a prayer for Charlie Kirk and his family. Also, today, we received clarification about St. Francis Hospital. One, no demolition permits have been issued yet. The demolition contracts were just submitted, they're planned in the city today. No demolition permits have been issued. Only current underway is preparation for asbestos removal, which will be certainly oversight by New Jersey Department of Labor Health. Today, there was discussion with both company and Trinity. Both parties agreed to have a community meetings regarding St. Francis. When the demolition happens, the project will begin structurally. It will start in the garage first. Then they will move on to Billie A., which is the Hampton Avenue, Burke Avenue. And then the former Versi Village Stadium, Burke Avenue. The total will be 10 buildings. And that's about it. Bless you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank Council President. So first, I just want to thank my colleagues for the recognition for the ATE through the 25th anniversary. It's very important, particularly to the members of the team and organizers, and lots for them to come to City Council and be recognized tonight. And then just wanted to add that, just a reminder, that there will be an art exhibit opening 12 p.m. on September Monday at City Hall atrium with artwork from members of the last 25 years who've worked with the ATE and task on art. So please attend and come and see the art they've done. Additionally, tomorrow night, it will be our Northmore Sisters Advisory Council meeting at Galley Baptist Church, 441 with the King Boulevard, from 5:30 to 7:00. And we'll have a special guest, Evelyn Mohammed, who will lead a discussion about disaster preparedness and emergency preparedness for Trentonians. for Trentonians, uh, from a citizen, citizen perspective, uh, what we need to do to make sure we're prepared if there's another emergency, say like a hurricane, sandstorm, and so forth. Um, there are some events coming up. Uh, we have on Saturday at the Battle Monument, there's going to be a cleanup in that neighborhood. Uh, it's going to be, it's organized by the Juanes Club uh, here in Trenton. And if you could attend to help, it's from ten AM until uh, it finish. And you're going to meet at the base of the monument at the corner of North Broad and Warren Street. So for more information, call six oh nine two oh eight nine 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 one. Uh, my colleague, Councilwoman Figaro Gettenberg already mentioned the Trenton High School Homecoming Parade this Saturday. Uh, it's really a great time. It's really a lot of fun to see all the students marching in the parade, cheerleaders, the band, everyone, and take a tour of each Trenton around the school area. Uh, this Saturday, we'll be playing Westwood's uh, Plainsburg, so hopefully we'll win and weather will be good. It'll be a fun day. Uh, also wanted to say thank you to everyone, particularly our Fire Department and emergency services and Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman Gonzalez, Mary Bruce Dior, for our nine eleven memorial celebration. Uh, this past nine eleven was very moving. Uh, and then to have the component of a bike run uh, for nine point one one miles throughout the city to visit, go by all the firehouses. Uh, that was very meaningful to watch. Uh, hopefully I will be able to ride a bike and join next year. Maybe some others in the room would like to do that too. But it was something that's great that's happening. I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart because that's an important thing to do. I just want to also thank Department of Natural Resources and Director Harris for getting the veterans of the world cleaned up so quickly this week. There happened to be a lot of garbage and debris there and I know there's some plans to trim the trees back, particularly around the eagle. So thank you for doing that, stayed in Broad. And then also for trimming the trees on Second Street, which have been done a long time. Uh, and then coming up, we'll be having the trees on Center and Lamberton getting done also. And that's really going to be good for the neighbors in that part of our city and the North Ward. So finally, um, just wanted to follow up because I know that issue of residency has been discussed a lot lately. So um, some folks may already know the comparison I'm going to provide, but I thought it was interesting, Council President. I just wanted to say, I found, uh, did some research on the other towns in Mercer County and found out that Ewing Township has residency requirements. Hopewell Township does not. Hopewell Borough does not. Lawrence does not. Hamilton, I thought this was interesting. They do have residency requirements for entry level positions, but not so for positions of special knowledge or skills. Maybe that's something to look at. Uh, and because of civil service, residents do get placed generally higher on any list of protected positions required. Robbinsville has no residency requirement. Westwood has no residency requirement. Eastwood's no. Pennington Borough, there's no residency requirement. Hightstown, there's no residency requirement. And Princeton has no residency requirement. And I can't share exactly which towns as mentioned, but there are Trentonians working in municipal police for other towns where they do not have residency requirements. So I don't know if we get the salaries open, we can get them to come back home, but I thought that was very interesting uh, in comparison to the other towns in our county. So God bless everyone. Thank you for coming. If it's your first time, please come back again and have a great return.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams, especially for that information I wanted to share.
Um, thank you, everyone, for being present. Good evening. I'm going to be fast. To everyone that came and spoke and shared your concerns, thank you for always being engaged and coming. Fourth, I'm glad that um, Summer UMass Fest was able to talk to our director and also to Ms. Washington, who spoke to uh, Director Bass, but also um, continue to come, continue to speak up so that we are able to know what is going on. For those who are able to attend tomorrow, there will be our Trenton City Stat Meeting here in the council chambers at ten AM. The following month, it will be in the evening, but for tomorrow, it is ten AM as we alternate in the morning and in the evening so that you have the opportunity to speak to our directors, um, directing and share your concerns with them. So please join us tomorrow, City Stat Meeting here in the chamber, council chambers at ten AM. Um, I just want to announce a couple of announcements. Uh, so this Saturday, there's a lot going on. As mentioned, we have Trenton High's Homecoming. We have Art All Day at Art Works at twelve PM. We have Party in Stowe that is hosted by Tough Foundation and the Powerhouse. That will be held at the Mill Hill Park starting at twelve. Um, the Cookout for a Cause is at twelve o'clock also. And then we have the Boys and Girls Club Cultural Festival. Shout out to Hispanic Heritage Fund as we, as we begin to salute our Latino community and our Latino history makers. Um, also we'll have a Trenton High Sports Night exhibit um, on that day as well. And a couple of other announcements. We have the Muslim Association, who has a community outreach in partnership with the Trenton Health Team. Thank you, Councilwoman Frisbee, for sharing this. This will be September twenty seventh at Fort Montgomery Place, beginning at eleven AM. And then we have the Pinkout Full Flag Football Game that is hosted by the Trenton Department of Recreation and that is October eighteenth at twelve PM. I'm sure we'll be announcing that later on in an upcoming meeting. And thank you all for being present. Have a good night. Maybe I want you to adjourn. Sorry.
Roll call. Councilwoman Figaro Gettenberg. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion, Carrie, adjourn.